I have 7:02 PM today on May the 4th be with you, May 4th, 2021. Appreciate everybody being here. I'll call this meeting to order. Gentlemen, welcome once again to our meeting. We'll go ahead and go with our regular agenda, which calls for the approval of the minutes as provided to you. Excuse me, I apologize. I see the new agenda and we will have citizen comments. So I will ask for anybody who has signed up under citizen comments, please come forward at this time.
Well, I think this would be comments not related to agenda items.
That's correct. It's not agenda items.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
There was one PowerPoint, like a JPEG, a PowerPoint or PDF.
Okay, that's, I remember that one.
Go ahead and state your name, address, you know, you know the.
The drill.
The drill.
Hi, thank you and good evening, Commission Chairman, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Bella. I live at 110 Hibiscus and I just have a few brief comments that I'm using this PowerPoint for. What you'll see in this are the yellow lines for the boundaries of the Boy Scout Ranch. So I think this is just to orient you, just to orient everybody into what you're about to see. Next slide, please. I'd like to focus on this one part that you see here in red lines. That's fine. On the right of that line below it is the Boy Scout Ranch and on the other side is the neighborhood. So what you will also notice, if you look at the very top of this image, you'll see that there's a U-shaped driveway at the top of the image, just a little to the left. Between that house and the next house, there is a drainage that has been cemented. There's bottom on it and when you cross Wedgewood, the water goes into the Boy Scout camp and you can follow that line. You can see the, the wear and tear on the Boy Scout Ranch, the gully that that has washed out. And to make that a little clearer, just.
Mr. Bella, let me, let me get out of here real quick because I'm not sure if it's shared on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
And Mr. Bella, would you speak a little closer to the microphone, please, when you talk?
Okay, thank you. There it is.
Mr. Bella, since we're using a new process, I remiss one thing. Can we just do a quick roll call, Ryan?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Hernan, Commissioner Beeler.
President via Zoom.
Commissioner McCormick.
President via Zoom.
And Chairman Solis.
Present. Thank you, sir. I apologize.
Not at all. Thank you. Again, Peter Bella, 110 Hibiscus. This shows the Boy Scout Ranch, basically using Google Earth, and the yellow line shows the boundary of the scout camp with the residential neighborhoods to the left upper corner. Next slide, please. I want to focus on this particular area and you'll see why in a sec. That's Wedgewood Drive that is the demarcation. I've used a red line to say on one side is the Boy Scout Ranch camp and on the other side is again that residential neighborhood. Up to the upper edge of the image, you'll see just to the left of center, there is a U-shaped driveway that if you follow between that house and the house directly beneath it, there is a drainage easement that has been cemented. When the water crosses the other side of Wedgewood Drive and goes on to the Boy Scout camp, you'll see that it is gully washed. It has created a gully there where there has been no improvement to contain the water. Next slide, please. And this gives you again, just a quick visual if it wasn't clear in the earlier image of where the water is currently going in this July 2019 image from Google Earth. Next image, please. When you stand in front of the Boy Scout, the entrance to the Boy Scout Ranch that was in that prior slide and you look southwest on Wedgewood Drive, that boundary line between the scout camp here to your left and the residence to your right, this is what it looks like. This is a photographic of Sunday. Next slide, please. So here you can see in the middle of the street, there's a box culvert that they're putting in to improve that drainage. Next slide, please. And there's a picture that this is literally looking over the fence onto the Boy Scout property. You can see the box culverts and the comment here is the concept of the diameter, the area, cross-section of that, of that box culvert. I would be interested to know, and I do not know, what the, what the engineering specs were on how much water that's supposed to be carrying, but it looks like a pretty good amount of water. So the next slide, please. And finally, this is a slide from using both the overlay of our proposed boundary for the rural residential district that includes the scout camp and Almas Creek and the flood plains. You'll see the legend shows that the blue color is the Hundred Year Flood and the pink color, which you'll see part of, there's some shoreline, as it were, on the Boy Scout camp that is within that, that 500. And again, to the right, you'll see that, looking again at Wedgewood Drive and where that water comes through, I'm imagining, I don't know this because I just have seen the box culvert for the first time on Sunday, but I'm imagining that that is where the water would go because that's where the, the eroded creek bottom goes. So I was hoping that the city was aware of this. Again, I know that the city of San Antonio may do things that they do by themselves. And one final slide, please. And it's not necessarily clear whether or not they've communicated well with the city of Castle Hills. But I would be interested to know what the downstream impacts are of that flood, that, that excess water. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Just Mr. Bella. I'll, I'll give Mr. Bella because we've been kept in the loop and our engineers have met with city of San Antonio for months before they began the project. We have all the specs and scopes of the project as well.
Ryan, I do not have the list of the citizens to be heard on all the issues. Can we also get that too? Is anybody else signed up for citizens to be heard? Yes, ma'am. And we did say zoning issues, zoning commission on any issue. So Mr. Bella, you qualified as any issue. Although the zoning commission and storm drainage is probably not within our purview. However, it is styled correctly. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is not on the, I have something that's not on the agenda.
That's no problem.
Ginger Majors 509 Gladiola Lane. I understand the issue I brought up last month will now be on June's agenda for this committee to review and I appreciate that. In the professional world of urban planning, my request for a code revision refers specifically to urban decay as I have been told. This can happen to older neighborhoods if our codes become lax, unenforceable, are not correctly written. The aesthetic atrocity of allowing a front yard to become a parking lot in our neighborhoods also allows for diminished property value as well as a lack of businesses interested in locating here. Urban decay can be a slow but steady process over the years, if not curbed by city planning. I'm asking for a review and rewriting of certain codes affecting the tract housing neighborhoods in our city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the cleaning up the argument. Anybody else sign in for citizens to be heard? In general, with no specific title. If so, then I will close the citizen to be heard section at 7:12 PM and we'll move on to our regular agenda. Thank you all for taking advantage of this is something new that the zoning commission, under Commissioner Beeler's direction, to provide as citizens to be heard so we can exactly hear some of the issues that are out there that could be potentially something that we explore in the future. So that is something that is applicable and well. Under items consent agendas, item number three, I'll need approval of the zoning commission meetings from April the 6th, 2021. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion. I'll need a second. A motion by Jackson. I gotta do this because I am taping everything for historical review.
Second.
Second by McCormick. We have a motion. Any other questions, comments, adjustments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, are all those opposed? If not, motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to the public hearing, which is number four.
Mr. Chairman, I have an issue of consideration which I'd like to raise for consideration by the city attorney before we proceed.
Yes, sir. Please state it. And the city attorney is with us by Zoom as yourself. Please state your concern and your point of order.
The point of order is an objection to the consideration, at least a possible objection to the consideration. It appears to me that this item is in fact a request for a variance, deviation from existing ordinances rather than a special use permit. And site two, section 211.009A3 of the Texas Local Government Code, which says that the authority of the Board of Adjustment includes an authorization in specific cases, a variance from the terms of a zoning ordinance if the variance is not contrary to public interest and due to special conditions. The literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship and so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. That appears to be what is sought to be done here. We have an ordinance which specifies a minimum building size of 1,500 square feet and what's sought is a variance to that to allow a building of about 846 square feet, if I remember the numbers right. And so it appears to me that this is in fact a request for variance rather than a special use permit, in which case it may not be appropriate to be before the zoning commission. So can I get an opinion from our attorney?
Sir, Mark.
So the applicant, applicant in this case had an option of either seeking a special use permit or a variance. The applicant elected to choose the special use permit approach. The basis for that is the, in the specific wording of the code section in the zoning code, which is section 50-348, which says, "In the general business district, except with a special use permit, each building shall have not less than 1,500 square feet of floor area, exclusive of garages, carports and porches." So I think it is within the scope of the ordinance that in this case, a special use permit is a vehicle that the applicant can use to get a permission from the city to build a building less than 1,500 square feet because our zoning code specifically allows the specific, the special use permit under this section of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Snoll. I withdraw my objection.
Yeah, it was clarification and we wanted to proceed. I appreciate Commissioner McCormick for bringing that up and allowing us to then proceed. So let's go ahead with item number four. It's a public hearing on the application from Ryan Ramsey for a special use permit for the property located at the southeast corner of West Avenue and Loop 410. CB, City Block 50006, PF, PTPFP-2ABS706, non-adjacent, West Avenue Commercial Property for the proposed construction of a new commercial business structure, less than 1,500 square feet total floor area, contrary to section 50-348-building area. The public hearing is open. I have one person signed up, Peter? Under, is that two? Is that a, I thought I saw a two here. That's a six. Sorry, I apologize. It's all right. There are no, any, there isn't anybody, anybody on Zoom that would like to speak in reference on behalf of this public hearing?
Chairman, can you open the public hearing?
Oh, I opened it 7:17. I opened the public hearing for this and we are open for this public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up according to our roster. Is there anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, then at 7:18, I will close the public hearing and we'll go down to item number five for the discussion and possible action on an application from Ryan Ramsey for a special use permit for the property located at the southeast corner of West Avenue and Loop 410. CB 5006, PTPFP-2ABS706, non-adjacent West Avenue, Commercial Property for the Proposed Construction of a New Commercial Business Structure, Less Than 1,500 Square Feet Total Floor Area, Contrary To Section 50-348-Building Area. At this point, we'll have discussion. Commissioner Beeler, do you have any questions or any comments?
Chairman, real quick, we have Ryan Ramey on the line on Zoom. He's the applicant representing Dutch Brothers Coffee.
That would have been part of the public hearing, but that's fine. We can hear the applicant. But it's pretty straightforward, Mr. Ramsey. Is there anything you need to add to this?
Um, I had some notes prepared. I could give a quick overview of, of the site, kind of the process that we've gone through to get to this point and then just kind of.
Commissioners, if they'd like to go through that process. Commissioners, are you interested in listening to that whole? All right, Commissioner, then we shall proceed. Mr. Ramsey, go ahead with your presentation, please.
Okay, I, I promise to keep this brief. If, if you don't mind, I can, I can share a rendering and a site plan if, if the, if the commission would, would like to see that. If not, then, then no problem. I can just, I can run through this pretty quickly. I'll keep it under five minutes, I promise.
Go for it.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, Chairman, while he's loading that up, I just wanted to let the commission know that this has been through the Architectural Review Committee for the tree removal process, also for approved by city council, and then they went to architectural review for the, the architectural, the review of the building, everything. It was approved by city council. So we were in the process of review plan for construction and this came up as far as the review process, thus the requirement for this SUP, which essentially is an administrative checkbox and so, so we can move forward with their permitting and.
Yes, because I thought we had already approved this item.
Yeah.
And this is just the, the special use permit. As Skip said, we would have normally thought it was a variance, but it was qualified as a special use permit for the building section. Are you ready, Ryan?
I'm, I apologize. I'm having some issues with, with my PDF.
Not a problem. We'll have any questions the commissioners can ask. Commissioner Beeler, I had asked for you first. Do you have any other comments or questions for the applicant?
I, I don't believe so. My questions wouldn't be germane to zoning in particular. So, so no.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson, any questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Mr. Herndon, you had any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I did. I didn't hear it in the beginning. What is the total square footage you're requesting on this property?
Yes, sir. The building is 871 square feet. We, that's, that's just the size of the building. We've built one in College Station. We have one under construction in College Station, delivered one in Bryan Colleen. Temple's under construction. We've got a handful more going through permitting in San Antonio right now. That's just the size of their building. They frankly don't need all that space in order to effectively operate their business. So the, sorry, long-winded answer, but it's 871 square feet.
I had a, I had another, I'm sorry.
Follow that up. I'm assuming the, the size was picked because of the need for parking or just not a need for more square footage?
It's, it's, I think it's a combination of just creating an efficient building. While, and they also don't have any interior seating. It's only drive-through and walk-up with the patio area for, for walk-up customers. They, they do not seat anyone inside, so they, they just don't need a dining room area or anything like that.
Okay, and the entrance would be on West Avenue or West Avenue and 410?
Just West Avenue.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. McCormick, any questions or comments? Believe you're on mute, sir. Just a simple question and followed up to Commissioner Herndon. And so the, the reality is you, you, this is your normal size for this, this type of facility in whatever city you're at, or this is a unique size because of the location? That really was the question.
Oh, oh, sorry about that. No, it's, this is, this is their typical building size, anywhere from 860 to 873 square feet. It's not, it's not because of the small size. It's just their building design that they.
That's what I thought. Okay, not a problem. Mr. McCormick? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson has a question.
Will you have access from the parking lot that is adjacent that serves HEB as well as a little strip center there?
We will not. We will just have the one driveway from Loop 4, or excuse me, from West Avenue.
All right, then. Will the chair entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I may that we, that we approve this application for special use permit for this applicant.
So we have a motion by Mr. McCormick?
Excuse me, Mr. Solis?
Yes, sir.
There is a proposed ordinance, a proposed resolution for the zoning commission's consideration. If Mr. McCormick would want to include adoption of that resolution in his motion, that would be fine. If not, that's his option.
Sure, I'll recommend to improve to include the application or the, or the proposed resolution, 2021-05-04A, as preparing by the city attorney.
You have a motion and we need a second?
Second.
Second by Herndon and then we have any discussion, discussion, discussion. Seeing no discussion, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Congratulations, sir. We look forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Now, let's move on. At 7:24, I opened the public hearing on the geographical boundaries for the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Once again, we're here. We have several people signed up and we'll start off with the list. Mr. Carter, please come forward. What say you, sir?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Wayne Carter. I reside at 125 South Winston Lane. I have the distinct honor bestowed upon me to be the longest living resident in Castle Hills, starting in 1946. Starting in 1998, this neighborhood took on a large, large endeavor to try and keep our neighborhood intact the way it has been and we want it that way. These boundary lines that keep fluctuating and making a lot of us in the neighborhood nervous about what is the intent or what is the geographical boundary is very, very crucial because there are a lot of residents on Winston Lane that could be excluded or included in the boundary. It's most definitely important that the residents on Winston Lane be kept in the rural residential district. There are two new homes being built on Winston Lane, if you can believe. Have, we had, we had some down towards Foxhole Lane, but we have two new homes, large homes. And you know, in Texas, there's two questions you don't ask someone, how much land they owe, own, or how much they make. But my property taxes, just last week, I got the notice, my dwelling went up 4%, but my land value went up 39%.
Wow.
39%. So I'm here to ask to make sure that all of the zoning commission members fully understand where the boundary, once y'all vote on that, where the boundary actually is, that it includes all of the residential properties that exist now. Granted, there's five acres, five home sites, six, well, there's six home sites next door to me, that, that, that area that's belonged by, that was transferred over, bought by the school, the Christian school, good folks now. And now it's, now it's owned by the Googly, butcher the name, Googliano, Googliamo?
Close enough.
Family Foundation. They own it. Okay, they're trying to sell it, all right? But I know it's difficult to, to develop something and I'm not going to sit here and say I'm for development or against development. What I'm for is any development that is within the character of our neighborhood. Now, we fought the church, we fought bases and we fought the David Weekly. 28 homes being put on that 5.05 acres, 28 homes, without any regard to downstream, property, drainage or anything else. That was defeated also. So what we're looking for is for the character of our neighborhood to remain as it been for all these years, since 1952? If that's right, I'm not sure. So please, please, please make sure that you understand whatever these boundaries that keep floating around, make sure you understand that we, the neighbors, we, the residents, want that neighborhood, which is part of the west of the west, west of West Avenue. That neighborhood, those residential properties remain residential and not be thrown under a bus for any future commercial whatever. We stay, we stay residential like we have been since 1952.
Mr. Carter, before you leave, Ryan, will you confirm that what Mr. Carter's asking is indeed within the boundaries of what we're talking about? Again, to your point, which map is it? It's this one, right? All right. So on this, everybody should be on the same page, I hope.
Yes.
And so let's, I just want to make sure we're, we're all looking at the same one. People at home, Mr. Carter, I want to make sure we're all on the same page as we go through this discussion because it's essential that we do this. We have to have this. So Peter, you can answer the question to him directly. Are they, are they not? Peter?
Okay.
So the answer is yes.
All right. I'm good.
Then that's what I wanted to make sure.
Thank you for volunteering. I, I had to sit up there for a couple of years and I know it's a thankless job. Thank you for your.
No, we got progress making it. We're fine. Thank you and appreciate it. All right, next one. Peter Bella. Seems like we just saw you earlier.
Yes, again, Peter Bella, 110 Hibiscus, and thank you again for making the time to listen. The, as you do have, this eight and a half by 14 is the boundaries that the neighbors have been looking at. And again, the detail on the bottom shows that we have, we're not including, in our proposal, we're not including the school or the church, but we are including everything that is residential. You'll see the CDS and the commercial area that's just to the, what is that, southeast? I guess if you want to go along Military Highway. And there's also the one sort of squiggle to the right up where there is a Viceroy, 103 Winston. I can't remember. It's a commercial, it's a commercial property. So we've excluded that commercial property that is at the far corner, the, what is that? The southwest corner of the intersection of Winston and Military that you see on the detail.
Peter, one second. My commissioners that are on, on Zoom, can you see the map and feel comfortable that you're, it's accurately portraying for you to be able to make a decision?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, is this a map with the red border?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My only question has to do with the little piece down in the far right corner of that red area, which appears to be one lot and I can't read the number on it, but it is included in the residential area and I just want to make sure that it's not presently being used for commercial purposes.
It is a, it is a residence.
It's a residence according to Mr. Bella.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, please continue the presentation. We're just talking about, these are the boundaries that we want to propose for consideration that will be then notifying everyone within the area for them to come back and say yay, nay, this is what I want or this is what I don't want. So we're all on the same page, but we'd like to make sure that we have the right map. So if this is the map that's going to be accepted by the zoning commission, then accordingly, we send out the proper notifications and et cetera. That's what this meeting is about, right? To finally put the flag and say, this is what we want to be able to see and be on the same page. And then we start the process of input, additional input from citizens who will then be notified for the first time and say, oh, what the heck is this? Or some people say, I've been waiting for this forever. Let's get it done.
I would simply put a footnote on it that this is using BCAD, Bear County Appraisal District maps because the zoning map was, it was not clear around the church.
That is correct. That's not a problem. Anything else? Then we appreciate you, sir. Thank you so much. Next, Mr. Baker, Quentin. Do you like this map?
I do indeed. Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. I actually want to show you a video tonight. We've talked about the, the need for this rural residential district with regard to flooding issues. Well, we got an example of that with the big storms last Thursday and Friday. last Thursday and Friday. Uh, I went out and took photos, the Ackleys took photos, and thankfully Amanda Mills down in Fox Hall Cove took a nice video. There's more photos than this. I'll just show this one video um to the commission and the, the folks that are watching.
But as Mr. Carter taught, this is about the ambiance, the continuity of the community. It's not a drainage response, but you go ahead and show.
Well, there is, there is an issue here. There is a need to keep.
Have you had enough rain, Janet?
We can hear Amanda, but we can't see her video.
Not a problem. We, we're not in a hurry. We got it. We can hear the water.
We can hear them, but can't see them. While they're trying to get the, the video to play, uh, what you'll see, if we can get the video to play, is that the Almous Creek uh down along our west border of the city has, has become virtually a river in the rains last week. That receives the runoff from McGimsey Park, from uh the South Winston, Fox Hall, and Hibiscus. All, all that area drains down into the Almous Creek, which goes down behind Fox Hall Cove, then drains into Antonian, the Christian Church, Mary Magdalene, Aggie Park, and then winds up at West Avenue and, and Four Tenth. All right. Um, so I'm, I'm here to advocate for.
There you go.
There you go. This is behind Fox Hall Cove last Thursday.
How you doing, Louis?
Water level, you know, based on my walking down in the creek down there is probably six to eight foot deep. Okay?
Okay.
So just, just bringing up the importance of the open land we have, please, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Um, and McGimsey Park actually serves a vital role.
Have you had enough rain, Janet?
In controlling runoff and absorbing water. We really need to protect the open areas including uh Aggie Park, not Aggie Park, McGimsey Park, my apologies. That is still a bit upstream of Antonian in that video. It's right behind Fox Hall Cove. All right, so uh the, the point was to implore you to include McGimsey Park within the boundaries that are defined as the rural residential district because of its importance to the runoff and what impacts everybody downstream uh meant outside of the rural residential district. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to the next person signed up, and that would be Mr. Ackley. Stephen Ackley, please.
Welcome back, sir.
Stephen Ackley, one eighteen West Castle Lane. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and uh Commissioners. Um, I'm here to just to provide some additional comments on the uh, on the boundary of, of that. Uh, specifically, if we could go to the detail map on, I think it's on your sheet.
On this one?
Yeah, it's the Northwest Boundary Detail, it's called. Um, I want to stress the importance of including the uh boundary uh on the north side of the properties on West Castle Lane. And there are several reasons for doing this. Uh, and I want to distress this because the uh resolution from the commission last week said that the boundary would be West Castle Lane, which would exclude the properties northwest of West Castle Lane. So I want to make sure that we are representing that correctly. Now, I think there's the uh, the fine detail, is that the next slide? Bottom of the same page. Can you just go down a little bit?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so this is the West Castle Lane on uh, down here, and the boundary, uh, as Peter Bella mentioned, uh skirts, uh, the CBS properties and the uh, the two properties there, the school and the church, the two large properties. Um, the properties uh along West Castle Lane are indistinguishable from the properties on, on the south side of, of West Castle Lane. It's a one contiguous neighborhood. And as well, uh, all the property owners uh along West Castle Lane have signed on to the petition to uh be included in the residential district area. So I think, I, I think the boundary really makes sense in that, in that regard uh to put it in there and isolate the school and uh there, and you, and you take the boundary away from the church. So uh, and it, it reiterates uh Mr. Carter's comments about including these uh South Winston Lane properties uh that uh are in that kind of corner property uh of West Castle Lane uh as well uh where, you know, to make sure that that is, that is also included. Um, like I said, the comment was based on what was uh passed in the resolution on the, on the uh, at the last zoning commission hearing, which put boundary on West Castle Lane and excluded essentially all those properties north of there. And we want to stress that it's important to include those. And a hundred percent of the citizens, again, that occupy residences over there uh north of, uh, north of West Castle Lane have signed on to be included in the, and uh, the rural resident justice.
So.
A few of them are here today.
I, I just have a quick question for you. I, I know you're kind of the guru with the actual numbers. So how many residents are actually in the boundary that is being proposed?
Whoa.
I apologize. I knew you knew that, or maybe your wife knows it. But go ahead and work on it. Go ahead and work on it while we.
I, I think, I think based on the petition that I had, which was the uh, the occupants of uh West Castle Lane, uh Fox Hall Lane, uh Hibiscus Lane, and, and there, there were like ninety-three or ninety-four properties. So it does not include, for example, the properties that are presently in this boundary.
Correct.
On uh, on Danny Lane, or the properties on the, that actually border on West Avenue. It's just people with addresses there. So it's in excess of uh, of a hundred properties.
Not a problem. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all. I, I hope you uh agree to this uh, to these boundaries. I think they make a lot of sense.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in response to your question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Ackley's previous testimony was that there were a hundred and twenty-eight residences in this area, and I believe that does not include the PUD.
Um, I, 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 I think that's correct, but you know, more or less.
Yeah, it's a more or less answer. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Skip. Um, let's move on. Mr. Worth, Terry Worth, or Mrs., I apologize. Please come forward, Terry. Oh, no problem. I appreciate you. Giving us some time back. Love it. Todd? Troba? Troby. I apologize. There's E at the end. I see that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I, I'm basically, uh, my name's Todd.
We need your address. I apologize.
Yes, sir. My name's Todd Troby. Other, me and my wife, the one twenty-five West Castle Lane.
Perfect.
Um, we, and I kind of just want to agree with what Steve Ackley just mentioned. My property is on the, on the west side of West Castle Lane, and we border the back of the church property. I have a double lot that borders there. And as the, the boundaries currently show with the red line, we would be in the rural residential area, and we do want to be in that area. So um, I just want to confirm that we would want to be included, and I'm okay with the border being at the church boundary, which would be the back of my property line, but my residential property, I would want to be in a rural residential.
So I just want to confirm, since we have Mr. Bella here, is his property in the, in the boundaries? Just answer yes or no, brother. Well, I don't want to believe it. I want to know. Is it, are we going to answer to him directly?
It, one twenty-five West Castle Lane. It is, as, is, it is, on the drawing you have pictured, it is inside the red border.
And that's all we need to hear. I just want to confirm for you. That's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ackley. What would you like to contribute tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Zoning Commissioners, Mr. Solis. I'm Jacqueline Ackley from one one eight West Castle Lane. Thank you for listening to us. I came to make just a few points to recommend the map that has the red line on it as our hopeful boundaries. Uh, sort of in contradistinction to where we left the trail at our last meeting. Um, you've heard from Mr. Troby that he would like to be in it, and in this new map, he is. And it makes sense not to split a neighborhood going right down the middle of a street, just like you wouldn't want neighbors to be in two time zones or two states. We don't want to be in two different kind of zoning districts when we're essentially identical homes and lot sizes. Um, you've heard comments about drainage, but we're speaking about the ambiance too, Mr. Solis. Uh, it's Mr. Troby's home where um, before they remodeled it, when they went to remodel it, they found that foxes were living in the second story. And it is Mrs. Troby Maria who informed me that she had the ringed tail cats in her backyard. She's seen them a couple of times there. I've never seen them before. So the rural nature, the ambiance, is definitely on that side of the street. Um, as to this new map, it also includes that row of lots and all residences that are on South Winston Lane, going right up to Northwest Military Highway, with the exception of that one resi, one commercial property there that's nicked out. I would like to say that that row of properties includes a new home uh that Wayne Carter mentioned as a new construction. And that home is not just a new home, but it has horse corrals in the back. And we've seen the horses going up and down the street with their rider on Halloween. The little boy rode his horse up and down the streets and gave us out candy from the mounted position. Very sweet. Definitely adds to the rural ambiance of our neighborhood. If, you know, we're going to include the Boy Scout Ranch in this, and we definitely want to include the Boy Scout Ranch in this for many reasons, ambiance and drainage, you would see from the map that all the residences on South Winston Lane in that row back up to the Boy Scout Ranch, if for some reason the Boy Scout. I'm sorry. If for some reason the Boy Scout Ranch uh returned to private ownership, um, if, say, the Boy Scouts went bankrupt, um, and that whole large piece of land uh were to be developed, it would be a chikonjau with all those residences and homes and lots on South Winston Lane. They're sort of en suite with the Boy Scout Ranch. Um, so they should be of the same zoning type. I feel that that's logical because at, at potentially one point in the future, they would be all part of the same milieu. And um, there's very much the residential, uh, rural residential ambiance there with the horses and the new home that's going up. So those are my comments of hoping that this red line map is the adopted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again tonight. Bernard? A new player to the argument.
Hello, uh, Bernard Yeddermeyer. I live at one one five East Castle Lane. My parents live on one oh five West Castle Lane, and I'm just looking at the border. I agree with it. That's, that's why I came. That it was, I didn't know if it was cutting uh Castle Lane in half, one being on the rural district, one being not. So um, I like it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. That concludes. Anybody that I have in the sign-in roster, is there anybody at home that would like to contribute to this public hearing? Going once? Going twice? Since we do not have anyone else signed up or online to be able to speak, I will close this public hearing at seven forty-seven PM, and we'll go on to item number seven with the discussion of possible action. Item seven is discussion of possible action by the zoning commission on the geographical boundaries for the rural residential, RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Um, let's go ahead, Commissioners, and start our conversation. Um, Skip, why don't you start us off?
Yes, sir. Uh, we agreed last time as all, all of the boundaries, except for these around the church and school uh northeast of uh West Castle and northwest of West Winston. Uh, and that was what was to be uh addressed this evening. And from the testimony that we've had in the public hearing, it appears to me that we have no one who is opposed to the set of boundaries that we have on the diagram with the red outline, which we should now have available on our screens or on display in the council chambers. Um, it appears to me that this is a reasonable division of the boundary between uh RR and church, school slash commercial. And I think that that probably is uh, is the one that has all of the support of the community, from what I've heard. And all of the people that we've heard so far also seek to include McGimsey Park in the RR district. Uh, and that's something that, that I would recommend because uh it, it does us a ill service to delay that until it's too late to act on it. I think we need to do that now. We need to have control of this area for drainage purposes, if for no other purpose. So I think that's an appropriate division uh of the RR district. Uh, that's about all I've got to say on it at the moment.
The motion?
I'll make a motion if the chair is ready.
I will in a few seconds. Mr. Jackson had some questions in reference to the divisions. So, Mr. Jackson, would you like to go ahead and make sure we're clarified and on the same page?
I want to clarify in my mind that the uh outline in red includes all residential with the inclusion of McGimsey and does not include any commercial property. Does not include school or the church.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other question, Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Bueller, what, what would be your thoughts?
I think we've got it finally. Um, so, yeah.
I would agree. Mr. Herndon?
I like this map a whole lot better than I liked the previous ones, although I'm not, uh, I'm not opposed or for including McGimsey at this point. Uh, I don't see why we couldn't consider it uh going forward. I, I haven't made a decision on that yet.
It is in there right now. Under this, under this scenario.
Right, but that doesn't mean all of it will end up in it.
That is correct.
So uh, at this point, I'm fine with this map. I kind of like it. It's the best one we've seen so far.
Uh, as I conclude, I would say that congratulations to the community. Thank you for listening to us as well as us listening to you. Uh, it was a good back and forth. We have finally, you know, when, when I took over this opportunity, I know this was going to be coming down our pipe very quickly. I had told the, the city council we would get it passed before their elections, and it was passed before their elections. Now this boundary is the next step to make sure that we ensure the follow-up is done. So I appreciate everybody being here, the contributions. Mr. McCormick, I'd like to hear your motion at this point.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I move that we approve, let me look at the proposed resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash oh four B. And I'd like to clarify that the document to be attached as the exhibit A to that resolution is the one that we have on the screen and should have on display now with the red borders designated number twenty twenty-one dash oh five four, uh, zero four, one eight two six zero six six, or six eight four eight dot PDF. And that's the one with the red borders that includes McGimsey Park and outlines the church and school and, and the commercial properties and excludes them from the RR district.
That is correct. And once again, we have a motion. I'll need a second. I have a second by Jackson, motion by McCormick. Um, discussion, yes, sir?
Mr. Solis?
I am here.
Uh, this is Mr. Schnell. Um, the caption of, of the resolution that Mr. McCormick read contemplates that, that this would be a recommendation to the city council so that we won't have to redo this. Um, but I noticed that in the resolution paragraph, um, I failed to include that. And I would ask if Mr. McCormick is comfortable with the um, the now therefore paragraph reading, now therefore it is resolved by the zoning commission of the city of Castles, Texas, that it recommends to the city council that the areas in the city limits of the city depicted and described in the drawing, drawing attached as exhibit A um be eligible to be in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. I, I make this Rural Residential Zoning District. I, I make this suggestion so that we know that the city council is, is in line with this recommendation.
I'll amend my motion in that way, Mr. Schnall, and include that wording in the last paragraph.
Thank you, sir. So we have an amended motion, and we have a second. Any discussion, discussion, see no discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. It is passed. We have boundaries now that we're sending to the city council. Congratulations. Move on to the next item. Yes. Yep. That is true. Item number eight is the public hearing at 7:54 PM. I will open up this public hearing. On item eight is public hearing on amendments to section 50-61 and 50-391 to modify existing limitations on habitable accessory uses in a single-family zoning district and in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to allow rentals under certain conditions. I think I saw one person signed. Actually, I don't see anyone signed up for this item. Yes, or Mark?
Can you announce the time you opened the public hearing?
7:54.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Having no one here signed up and no one present, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to contribute to this public hearing? Seeing none, that at 7:55, I will close the public hearing and move on to item number nine. Discussion and possible action on amendments to sections 50-61 and 50-391 to modify existing limitations, habitable accessory uses in a single-family zoning district and in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to allow rentals under certain conditions. Mr. McCormick was one that who actually worked a lot on this item. And Skip, I would ask you to lead the discussion and provide your insight, sir.
Okay, I, I'd like to divide this up into discussions on 5061 and 50-391 separately.
Not a problem. Let's go with 50-61 first.
If, if it suits you, Mr. Solis, I'd like to go with 50-391 first and offer a mo, offer a motion for discussion.
Go ahead.
Offer a motion for discussion.
We are in discussion, sir. Just go straight to it on 50-391. Your thoughts?
Okay. Well, the, the RR district was created with a lot of little problems that, that are special and unique to that district in mind. One of them is the fact that the streets are only 20 feet wide at their widest, and sometimes narrower than that. So what, what we decided was needed was to limit the population growth and the number of residences, and to keep the population density down in that area, so that roadway traffic capability is not overrun. And that was part of our consideration and discussion in, in recommending approval of the RR district. So one of the, one of, one of the concomitants of that is that adding in residence in a habitable accessory building does increase the population density significantly, and in that particular area may cause problems that we don't presently anticipate. In any case, it will increase the traffic load on that area in particular. Now, I noticed that we did have a few people appear at the last month's hearing, and those that I recall were opposed to the idea of renting out habitable accessories in the RR district. There was one that was opposed in the, in the A residential district, a single-family district, but nobody that I recall spoke out for it. So I think that's, that's a serious consideration. So the, the other problem is that, that once, well, first of all, rental properties are known pretty well to tend to reduce property values. And properties that are occupied altogether by tenants rather than owners are, do tend to be less well-maintained than those that are occupied by their owners. And that's one of the reasons that I put in the limitation on rental properties, only in the case where the owner makes a residence on that property. The other thing that, that we haven't addressed, and I didn't mention in my proposed language, is we have not placed any limitation on how many habitable accessory units someone might have on a property. And if there's an opportunity for somebody to come in and rent out both the house and the habitable accessory unit, and perhaps even build a second habitable accessory unit, and try to rent out all three of them, I think that tends to substantially dilute our zoning restrictions in that, in that district, and increase the, the, the problem of excess traffic proportionately. And because we have more tenants and less ownership presence, we would be inclined to have some, some reduction in property values. So I think there is a substantial argument against allowing rental of habitable accessories in the RR district. So with regard to, just to the RR district, I guess my motion, if there's one appropriate now, would be to deny this proposal as to the RR district and as to section, what is it, section 50-391.
So in reference to 50-91, Skip, I mean, excuse me, Mark, would you like some clarifying to what he's?
Yeah, I think, Mr. McCormick, if that, if that is your recommendation, then what I would suggest, when it's appropriate, when the chair calls for a motion, or whenever you want to make one, that your motion be to adopt resolution 2021-05-04C without any references to section 50-391A.
Okay.
And, and that would, I think, accomplish what you are suggesting. Because then the ultimate recommendation would be just modify, if, if it is adopted, would be to just modify section 50-61A, which applies to the A single-family district.
Right. Okay. And can we go on to the other one, or do you want to go to other people for 50-391, Mr. Chairman?
You know, it's an overall thing. So go ahead and Skip, and make your point, and then we can have people.
Okay. In 50-61, we're referring to possible rental of the habitable accessory units in the A single-family district. And the same considerations apply, except that in the A single-family district, for the most part, our street is 35 feet wide, and so the traffic load probably should not be terribly significant. At least, that's my opinion. I have observed other parts of, of this city, San Antonio, that is, and other small towns where they do allow rental of the habitable accessory units, and it doesn't seem to make too much difference, even in a, a, a better, what do you want to say, higher dollar neighborhood, where the habitable accessory is rented out. The one concern that we haven't addressed is how many habitable accessories we're talking about, and I suggest that we limit it to one per property, and that we continue the proposed limitation of habitable accessories being rentable only in the case where the owner of the property makes his residence on the property. And so that's, that's my argument there. And I think personally, I don't really have a stake in it. And so I, I think it's going to be up to the other members of, of the commission to raise issues that they may see that I haven't picked up as to whether it's appropriate to allow rentals of the habitable accessory units in the cases where the owner makes his residence on the property. I think we should probably limit the number of habitable accessories that are rentable to one per property.
Thank you, Skip. Sir Herndon, I know you're ready.
Thank you. Yeah, I've thought about this. I do a lot of rental properties in the city of San Antonio and Castle Hills, and I've thought about this a lot. And I mean, we could effectively double our population by allowing everybody to build an additional structure and rent it out in their backyard. I'm not for this in any manner. I think it possibly violates some, I, I don't know, maybe some of the multifamily laws on single-family residents to begin with. I know this year alone, I've had to rezone two properties within the city of San Antonio to allow for multifamily. And, and I think that process, it brings some clarity to the neighborhood of what's going on. I mean, this effectively can take every accessible dwelling in somebody's backyard and turn it into another rental. And, and I don't think our city needs that. I don't think that's what, I don't think we need to increase our residency at the expense of all the neighbors and the people that are living here now. And, and I'm going to stick by that as my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bueller, your thoughts?
I share the same sentiment as Mr. Herndon. This is a residential, when I, when I think of my street as, as, that I live on, as a residential, I, I, I consider it a single-family residence. And single-family residence means something. And to allow, essentially taking my single-family residence, or my neighbor taking a single-family residence and making it into essentially a duplex is, is nothing that I can get behind.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson, your thoughts?
I grew up over in Laurel Heights, and there are a number of big homes over there, and there were a number of garage apartments. My sister has a house, that situation. Those were rented out to students. Various things like that, and did not seem to create a problem. At the same time, I don't think I'm in favor of people in Castle Hills building garage apartments in their backyard, or converting their detached garages or whatever into apartments. Just that simple.
That's not a problem. You know, I, I think when, when it's brought into the terms of expansion of neighborhoods, it does lead into the, the whole essence of what zoning is about, and that's about continuity of community and areas. And so when you have this little dangling modifier of people being able to convert something over to another additional residence within the same area, it does change the, the, the essence of what the area in the neighborhood is all about. So I concur, and I think that this is probably ill-advised for us to move forward and give this recommendation to the city council. So at this point, those are my thoughts. Mr. Herndon, would you like to make a motion, sir?
Well, if, I guess we need to make a motion to recommend a city council a denial.
I have a motion. Do I need a second?
Second.
Motion, second by McCormick and by Jackson. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bueller, anything last thoughts before I call it?
I, I have a question. Do, is there some, is there something requiring us to send anything on this to the city council?
Yes, sir. It's styled for us to take discussion and possible action. The action will be denial. So it's on our agenda for, for a decision by us, as we recommend everything goes to the city council. I heard your question as.
We, we, we can't just table this forever.
No.
Yes, since we send it with a denial, sir, it, you know, the council has the option to be able to do as it wishes. We are appointed by.
But they also have, okay. I guess I'm implyingly making my point.
I agree. Loud and clear.
Would prefer it not, yeah.
Well, may I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
If we send it over with a denial, it'll require a supermajority to overrule it, as I understand the, the, well, no, that's for, that's for a special use permit. Never mind.
That's, Mr. McCormick, you're right.
You're correct. Time of city council, Skip. It is correct. Supermajority is needed to overturn our decision.
So it would take four votes out of the five on the council.
Mark?
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, a recommendation by the zoning commission to deny the request would require a supermajority of the city council to overrule it.
So therefore, and just to complete the numbers, that's four out of the five.
Correct.
Gentlemen, we're all on the same page now. I like us. We're on the same page.
My comment still stands, by the way.
We hear you loud and clear. But one of the things we want to be able to show people is that we can trust our institutions. We trust the process. We shall trust our council members. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Those opposed, motion to deny. Thank you so much. Gentlemen, I will take a motion to adjourn. It's 8:08. I have a motion by McCormick, second by Jackson. He loves to adjourn. All, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all, and congratulations. The meeting is over.